So is, are, is he ready if the, if we're shown on the TV, we can start?
I believe so.
Yeah. Yep. I'd like to call the first workshop to order. Thank you, everyone, for waiting. We were just waiting for a fifth person, so we had a quorum so that we could proceed tonight and thank everyone for coming out. So, of course, our times are a little bit off, but we will listen to all groups that are scheduled for tonight. So first, we'll have Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Dute is absent. Deputy Mayor Ambulon is absent.
Here.
Councilor Dunn is absent.
Here.
One is absent. Councilor Miller is absent.
Here.
Councilor Rose is absent.
Here.
Councilor DeGeele is absent. Councilor Zampiano is absent.
Here.
Okay. First one, budget overview for 1920, operation, operational and capital is library. So, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. I'll try to make this a little bit speedier than normal. There's a lot of paper in front of you, and I'll try to go through everything as quickly as possible so it makes sense. The last page in your packet includes a detailed summary of each account in our budget, but I'd like to start with the first couple of pages to go over our budget highlights and departmental goals and some of the factors driving our request increase. So the second slide in your packet is our first goal, which is to better serve our patrons by assessing and responding to their diverse needs and remaining a strong and positive presence in our community. And to accomplish this, we'll try to do four things. Recognize our areas of growth. Why are people coming into the library? What are they asking for? Why are they using us? And try to meet those needs. Second one is to invest in more staffing and training, professional developments to meet increased use and demand, and ensure a sufficient number of qualified and well-trained staff are available during all library service hours. Third, offer more programming by following our three E model of engaging, educating, and entertaining members of the community. And four, to identify community members for collaboration and promotion, like we've been doing with the Winter Speaker Series, partnering with Honeywell, Penn Globe, trying to bring more awareness to the businesses and groups in town. If you slide to the next page, it details areas of growth in the library. Salaries represent a significant portion of our budget request and full-time dictated by union contract, but the part-time hours, since, since serving as library director, I think there's an insufficient number of staffing hours in our budget. And in order to move forward or to see any increased growth or use, we need to increase our number of part-time hours to make it more conducive to accomplish our goals and to see where people are coming in and what they're using more. For example, 2,500 more annual patron visits this year compared to last year. Adult programming has increased, children's program has increased significantly, attendance up 57% in the last year. It's not unusual to have 40 to 60 people in our kids program. That's a significant number of kids and people coming to use the library. Also downloadable items is another significant increase. That all requires staff time, not only to do one-on-one training with people when they come in with their own devices, but in order to devote the time needed, you can't take somebody away from a public desk without having somebody else there to meet the other needs of people coming in. Programming is a popular service that we offer, but it's a staff-intensive investment that requires a lot of planning, a lot of hours that, in order to run a successful program, full-time hours need to be supplemented by part-time hours. But I do think there is a lot of growth trending towards programming, but like I said, there are a lot of hours and time that goes into planning a successful programming. And having more part-time hours to supplement the full-time hours would be incredibly beneficial. I also would like to highlight that in the POCD survey, 57% of the respondents recognized the library as excellent, and I'd like to see this positive impact continue. I think it's a strong presence that we have in the community, and moving forward, I'd like to be able to recognize, you know, what people are looking for and being able to offer that, whether it means adding more services or more resources, but being able to accommodate those different needs. The other slide after the areas of growth is the proposed part-time staffing and changes. It's a lot of numbers, but basically what it comes down to is we're requesting 30 more hours, part-time hours, per week, like I said, to accommodate the increased use and demand that we have. I think in order to completely fulfill what people are coming into the library for, staffing hours needs to be increased. That's what that slide is. There's also a couple of program highlights. It's not just children's program, it's adult programming, it's variety, educational, entertaining, being able to engage with different people on different levels. And it's not just a typical coming in to check out a book anymore. I think we're moving in towards a more service-oriented, program-oriented, providing an experience for people, whether they, you know, learn a new hobby or learn a new skill. That's all part of what we're trying to provide for people. The second goal is to meet the enhanced benchmark of standards established by the Connecticut Library Board. I am all for trying to reach a certain set of standards, and the Library Board of 2017 endorsed Best Practices in Connecticut State Libraries, Connecticut Public Libraries. It's a voluntary practice, but it's a self-evaluation tool where libraries can use that to evaluate what they're doing in terms of different categories, whether it's facilities, finance, governance, staff, resources. I chose to focus on staff because there is an element involved that I think doesn't get addressed enough, and that's safety, safety of the building, safety of the staff, safety of the people in the buildings. There's certain numbers associated with this standard, and currently, we aren't meeting it. And I think in order to address that safety issue, sometimes there's only two people in the building. And at Smith, when you're separated by a floor, sometimes you have no idea what's going on upstairs, you have no idea what's going downstairs. And to me, that just raises up concern. So that benchmark of enhanced, it suggests or it encourages you to reach towards a certain number of staff members on the floor during all open service hours. And that's what one of the final slides is. That is recommended based on our population. Full-time equivalent is 8.46, that's what I proposed. The benchmark standard is 8.7, so that would get us a lot closer than we are now, which is 7.63. And I think that having the two buildings and being able to safely, securely run both of them, it requires more staff than what we're allowed to provide currently. So that's staff, which I know I went over very, very quickly, quickly, but that's a significant portion of our budget request. And I wanted to make sure that you understood why we were asking for such a big increase. To be able to meet increased use and demand. Why is the library growing? Where are we growing? What can we do to make sure that we're meeting that new increased use and demand? And also being able to hold ourselves to a certain standard. These standards were established by the Library Board, and they're there for a reason. They have other trickling effects. If I wanted to apply for an LSTA grant, they're going to ask me to do this assessment. That is money that I could apply for, but I have to make sure I reach these standards set by them, and I have to prove that to them. So this is our way of working towards that. The second big portion of our budget request is utilities. Unfortunately, there is a little issue going on with our heating and cooling system, our geothermal system at Atwater. The kilowatt usage is, for some reason, increased. We're working on trying to figure out what the problem is, but in order to ensure that we have enough money in the budget until we can kind of figure out what the problem is, we put in a large number.
Can you just go over what the abbreviations mean for your staff? Like what's the, what does LA, SLA?
Sure. So, there's different positions. LA is library assistant. SLA is senior library assistant, which is a step above, and then PTL is part-time librarian, and then custodian.
Okay. Thank you. Have you had a large increase in the Sunday, in Sundays, but people coming, more people coming in then too?
Yeah. I think that with the programming has definitely helped. I've heard from people that they're attracted to the variety, they're attracted to the fact that it's different programming, stuff that they probably wouldn't have been introduced to before. I like how it's community outreach by allowing people to be more familiar with what's available in their own hometown. Yeah, and then usually when people come in for a program, they stick around for a little bit, so they take advantage of other resources that are available in the library.
When you talked about adding staff, you talked about safety, but you didn't talk about safety of the collections and the property. And since we have a lot of people using computers and you've got
Sure.
the Makerspace and
There's
I noticed that you're going to start or have started converting older types of media like VHS tapes to DVDs and things like that.
There is a lot of expensive equipment in these buildings, and to be honest with you, there's lots of little nooks and crannies that people can go and hide in. And to be able to monitor all those areas requires people available and not being occupied with, you know, someone at the desk. It is a concern. The biggest takeaway I would hope from this is that the library is growing, and we're glad we're growing. We're hoping to move forward, we're hoping to encourage people to come and use the library. 35% new patrons added in the last six months is encouraging to me, and I would like to know why people are coming. But with this increase, of course, more staffing would be helpful so that we could devote the time to new resources, new initiatives, new projects, new programs, and not just rest with what we've been doing in the past. Kind of look at it as a growing thing.
I see you have an increase in terms of facilities maintenance. What are some of the things that you feel are critical right now that might should be priority, things that you need to do since you put an increase in here?
That increase, so the previous year's budget did not increase include in elevator maintenance at Smith. We no longer provide, we no longer pay for maintenance for the Atwater lift or the smaller lift at Smith, but we do pay for the monthly maintenance on the hydraulic elevator at Smith. So that chunk of money is set aside for that. And then I think it leaves about $10,000 left for everyday maintenance, whether it's heating and cooling, lighting, general maintenance tasks. Lately, it's been heating and cooling. That's been an issue. The Smith Library has had some heat issues that's required several hundred dollars worth of gas to be poured into it. That's significant. Light bulbs is significant.
Do you use that lift at Atwater now, or is it not?
It is being used. Unfortunately, it just broke again, but has been repaired. The little pins that move in and out for the door latches basically sawed off one of the wires because they didn't come loose. So that, I know is going to be a service repair. That's probably going to be at least $500.
Many times saddened, right?
It was going well for a while, and then I can just about guarantee once a year it'll have some type of breakdown. You know, and whether or not it's a door that breaks or any other type of maintenance, you know, shelving, sometimes they tend to be larger expenses.
So Mike, can you address the, what is going on with the electricity, the heat in whatever at Atwater? Like where, where are we with that?
We need more study, but I think, I think, I think the biggest thing that helped them would be to get that survey and assessment done. I think Lauren, Lauren's been working on it, so.
We did have somebody come and look at our geothermal system to see what maybe was not working with the pumps, and I think they're working on trying to get an answer for us. So whether it's the pumps that's working, whether it's the backup that's running because the pumps aren't working correctly, could be lighting that could be contributing to it, we're working on an answer. And I think they're trying to figure out what part of the complicated problem we can do to fix.
If you go back to the third page, your areas of growth, the top part of the page, I think the bottom's right, but so I read this and understand it right, I think the dates are wrong at the top.
So I tried to do
2018, 2017 should be switched in the column.
The second column is July 2017 to June 2018. So I tried to do one complete year of growth for you. And then the first column, I should have more descriptively provided for you, that's July 2018 to December 2018. I want you to do the most recent six months for you when I created this chart. So the second column is one full year of statistics from last fiscal year, and then the first column is the first six months of this fiscal year.
So, so Alex, it's the left-hand page, the left-hand side.
2017, 18 is only six months then?
It's the first, it's the first half of this fiscal year.
First half.
Compared to the first half of last fiscal year. And on the right side of the page is
Right.
a whole fiscal year, June, July to June. So there's the, the two charts. So it's on the left side and not so much the column, it's the, the whole chart she's using. So the chart on the left-hand side is just the first half of 2018 compared to 2017. And the chart on the right-hand side is the whole fiscal year, 1718 versus 1617.
Right, but if you look at, like go to the right-hand column.
Yep.
2017, 18, adult items checked out and renewed. 2017, 18 is 46,687. 1617 is 50,437, so it's showing a percentage difference.
Decrease.
And that's a decrease.
Right.
Right.
So that's not, I just, this is, these are the statistics we include, so I didn't want to make it seem like
Everything was wrong.
Everything peachy. You know, we do have some decreases. So a trend is that print items are circulating less.
Oh, I get it. So it's like a financial report here. The red is in the red.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. That went down. Thank you for pointing that out. That was the one few things on here that went down. Yes.
I missed it. I thought you were highlighting the one. She's highlighting this thing going backwards.
It went down. Everything else went up.
Got it.
So all the red is negative.
It's in the red.
Yes, in the red.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you.
Senior library assistant.
And then when you look to, in the, in the big book, like if you look at the actual utilities cost for 1617 was 48,220, and 1718 was 63,000, so that's, Franny, that's when we got our problems started. Unless we could, yeah, must be.
And I honestly thought it was because I used the radiant ceiling panels, the radiant heat ceiling panels, which I have not used since, so that doesn't explain why October, November, December, the numbers are still high without any other accessory unit being on.
If we go back to your areas of growth charts, you show an increase of 24.2% for interlibrary loans.
So those are items that patrons have requested from other libraries.
Yeah, but that's material coming in.
Right.
So my question is, are you still transporting material from library to library?
Yes, and you would be amazed at the amount of material we transport, which is a nice thing because that means people are using. We belong to a consortium for a reason. It's resource sharing. So we belong to Lion, which is a 30 library group, and part of the benefit is if it's an item that we can't purchase, we can very easily get it from another library within a timely manner, but that requires a physical transportation of material back and forth, which we pay for and which I move back and forth. But I like seeing that volume move because that means that people are making requests, we're meeting those requests, and people are taking advantage of a system that we provide and the service we provide.
And you're carrying more?
Yes.
Okay. That was my point, yeah.
But we have fiber operations and maintenance at water only. Why is it only at water? I'm probably wrong on this, but.
I think in 2017, Atwater Library was on DSL, where the Smith Library has always been on fiber, I believe. I think because of their location. I think it has to do with the proximity to a school system, which might be TES. There's some scientific reason behind, behind it, I'm not sure. When Bob was in his last year, he initiated this whole process, so the opportunity to move from DSL to fiber, which obviously is a much faster internet, internet speed. When you apply for an E-rate grant through the FCC, part of the requirements for getting this money for the installation of fiber is now you're responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of it, which is why Atwater is the only portion of that budget because Smith, I believe, was either grandfathered in or they had it long before this E-rate process and the grant. That was only for Atwater. I think from what I was told, it has to do with the length of the fiber run. That's why it's so costly. But I will say our internet is, I've never had a problem with it. We never have a drop of service, we never have a concern, it's fast enough.
So it's fast?
It's a very good investment.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
No. Okay.
Thank you very much for your detailed report.
Thank you.
Good job. Police Department is next. Okay, so they did theirs in 25 minutes, so let's see who gets the medal for shortest presentation time. Maybe we can get back on stage. No, just kidding.
I'll give it my best shot.
I thought I'd be home by now.
So, okay. Floor shares.
Just give me one second. Unfortunately, I don't have any slides for you, but.
No handouts?
No handouts. I like to keep it simple. We're going green, so.
Okay. That's good.
So first, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for the support, for the opportunity as acting chief of North Branford Police Department. The support of this council since July 2018 has been nothing short of outstanding. Your commitment to the men and women of North Branford Police Department has not gone unnoticed. To have a successful transition in a department takes a commitment from your newest member of your staff to the most senior member of your organization. It also takes the support of each department head, town manager, town attorney, community, and most of all, town council and North Branford Police Commission. On behalf of our department, thank you for taking this leap and entrusting us to lead this department to the future. As I look back at the last nine months and reflect on what we together have accomplished in such a short period of time, I can't, I still can't believe in how much we've done. This was not the sole work of myself or the Lieutenant Anderson, but required buy-in from all facets of this town. In July, together, we charted a new course. Our plan, our goals, direction, and our image changed. Your trust and support helped the North Branford Police Department transform itself in all aspects in a very short period of time. We have achieved many of our goals and will continue to set new standards and higher goals as we move forward. Tonight, I had the privilege and honor to submit the North Branford Police Department and Communications Department 2019, 2020 budgets. The goal of these budgets was to set the framework of a fiscally responsible plan which would allow the new chief flexibility in continuing our progression forward as we enter our new chapter. However, tonight, I'm going to make an unusual request. I'm not sure if this request has ever come from a department head before, but it was a first time for everything. So tonight, I'd like to make the first and hopefully only cut to this budget. Including your budget package should be a capital crest labeled number two for automatic license plate readers for just over about $36,000. After submitting these, this budget, these items have already been granted approval for purchase by you. They're no longer deemed as requested this time. So if, if you want to start with the communication budget, because that's probably the easiest to look at, we're coming in with an increase of $4,739, and that's with contractual increases. Comes to 0.85%. We can go line by line unless you have specific questions related to communications budget. The focus of this was added trading for the dispatchers and also the purchase of a 911 chair, which is the standard, industry standard for the communications.
How often do a police officer How often do police officers have to step in for a dispatcher, does that happen a lot?
It's happened actually a little bit less frequently, but in our world, someone has to be there twenty-four seven, so you just don't know when that, when that long-term...
You have to kind of do a guesstimate as to what the cost is?
Yeah, yeah, so, because a long-term fill and a police officer and a higher cost, it adds up. Fortunately, the part-time dispatcher has taken a lot of the overtime, and his overtime is not at, it comes at a straight time cost, so there's a saving in the budget as you progress to the year. Now, if that changes, then you end up with a police officer there, and depending on the rank, it would depend on the overtime cost. So from year to year, it's actually, quite dramatically in different fashions.
I presume you're asking for a dispatcher chair because you have that other set, setup now, you have two consoles and everything's working?
Yeah, I mean, the chairs are out of any place, those are obviously the most frequently used, so we go through them the fastest. These, the chair that's, they're requesting and I'm requesting on their behalf is a, is an actual industry rated chair for, for that position, it's supposed to be more durable, buy more support, and it's, it's supposed to be longer lasting, that's why it's at a higher cost. So typically, if you buy a chair from Staples or something like that, we're replacing it or parts of it within months, just because it's twenty-four seven use.
So with the, the communication, we just recently, at our last council meeting, we had the RFP for Communications, the contract for that, is that in the communications budget or is that in the police department budget? Because I don't...
That, that is within the communications budget.
Three thousand.
Yeah.
Oh. So is the police, fire, and public works maintenance, is that the maintenance contract or is it?
Yes.
Something else?
No, that, that is the, tactical communications are our current vendor.
Okay, so tactical is the same one for all three of those, police, fire, and public works?
Yes.
It's one contract, it's just broken out between those three departments?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you go over the overtime line again? I know you were talking about, but I missed it.
Sure. The way the overtime works is, it gets filled by the dispatchers first, because they have their, they're within their own union. Our part-time dispatcher, if he's eligible and takes that overtime, he gets paid at a straight time rate per their CBA. If, if it's not filled within the dispatcher's union, then it goes to police officers who are certified to dispatch, have the qualifications, and they get paid by their contract, a police department overtime rate, but that's depending on what position they are within the department.
What grade they are.
So it's gonna almost double, is that, am I reading that right? One oh, the line one oh three?
You're, yeah, we were budgeted last year for ninety-one thousand four hundred and ninety-one, is that what you're referring to?
And it's just going to ninety-five?
Into ninety-five, and that's, that's the contractual increases that's, that's in it.
Oh, no, but I was reading the other line, the fifty-four, the fifty-four?
Yeah, the, the hard thing about that is, there's been years where we've been dramatically over in that, because of, because of dispatch personnel not taking that overtime or multiple dispatch personnel out, so it's, it's really kind of a, kind of a guesstimate either way because you don't know who's going to fill that position, and it has to be filled.
So the fifty-four is what you're expected to realize?
That's, that's what we're expected at the, the end of the shift.
Okay, all right.
How many police officers are certified to do the dispatch?
There are three right now.
So going back to equipment maintenance and the contracts for the maintenance, so the numbers that are in, in here, are those based on the current contract that we have?
Yeah.
Or does that include a potential increase by going out to bid?
Those are our current contractual figures.
Okay.
So, we had, we had an issue with our microwave, was it receiver?
Correct.
You always get those wrong with that, yes. Not the most radio guy. Over MBIS, so that's, that's actually down right now, it's being fixed, the, the part is hopefully going to be warranted, which brought about a conversation that the vendor had received a bid notice about his, the contract coming up for the, for the radio communications.
Yep.
He was under the impression that he still had a two-year extension possible on that contract.
So does the current contract allow for a extension?
I don't have that current contract, I had spoken with the town manager, it looks like that, that's, that doesn't relate this time, but...
Yeah, I pulled it, it doesn't read that way, the way I read it, but I'm going to review with Ben Marino tomorrow.
Okay.
And, and talk with Mr. Moffett David from Tactical tomorrow, just to make sure that we're clear in terms of the, what looks to be a, a three-year, a, a one-year term with two extensions, which they had, starting in two thousand and sixteen, so this is the third and final year as it reads in the contract, or as I read the contract, and that's why we're going out to bid.
Okay.
I don't see any language in there that allows for the extension, and typically, I think what we got to look like, for this particular contract, is, I would suggest a longer-term contract with some other language in terms of a, a two-year renewal type of, or year-to-year for two years or two-year renewal, something like that, that, certainly they, they are, I think, according to the chief, getting great service, I haven't talked to the, the fire chief, but from their perspective, phenomenal service, and they were the only ones that bid back in two thousand and sixteen, so I think we've got a good relationship with this company and I hope that we can continue, and I will certainly review with the town attorney tomorrow to see if I'm reading it wrong and maybe it's possibly two, two-year extensions beyond that, I could be reading it wrong.
Can I see that? That's the only reason why I'm asking, there's, we got an email from them today that they would confirm in our conversation today, we are willing to renew, I gotta get my glasses.
The other company said he's willing to renew the current radio maintenance agreement for an additional two-year term with no increase in cost for those two years, so keeping a flatline zero. And as part of that agreement, they will maintain the inventory for duration of the agreement, simulcast repeaters, spares for the FD and PD systems, which come up to about almost ten thousand dollars. That will eliminate the need for the town to purchase the spares as previously recommended to the police department and the fire department.
Okay, so he's under the assumption, that's assuming that we can extend the current contract?
Yeah, that was under his interpretation of...
That, of the contract, okay.
But that's a big savings, that blocks us in two years and ten grand savings.
Okay.
Without us having to purchase.
Problem is, our, our equipment's so old, so that once it, it fails, there's not, there's not a lot of parts and pieces out there to put it back together, which puts you all the way into a new system at that point, because you have no other option.
Right.
So, he had, he had reached out to us, probably a couple of months ago now, that, saying he had this, but he also has other contracts with, with other towns, so it's kind of a first come, first served basis.
Does anyone else have any questions under communications?
No.
Okay, so then let's go to Public Safety, please, forty-two forty, or forty-two-ten, I'm sorry.
So before, I think, I think what we're, what we're presenting here is a, a very fiscal conservative budget, but that would also give the latitude for the new chief to implement his programs, and the focus of this budget is really on the, on the professional development, which I know from experience from the department he's coming from, that he's a very big proponent of. With that, with that professional development, they typically use universities, which I'm under agreement with the, the belief that it's a very high level of, of training, also allows for more networking, networking outside your, your general area of the South Central region or, or the state of Connecticut. So with contractual increases, we're, we're looking at a baseline of a, of a hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars from my calculations to start. We're coming up, coming in with a total budget increase of a hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-one, which is a three point eight three percent increase, so we really went through this budget line by line and could treat, really, really looked at each, each item and decided what was necessary and needed, and also the areas where we needed to grow, and we came in under that, under that baseline contractual number.
Do you want to share with them the decreases and on the, on our cheat sheets so they'll have an idea of where our savings was?
And just, just to go back one, one time, that contractual number, which, which I had mentioned, a hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-five, that's also without including the deputy chief's position, so that's just baseline contractual numbers with raises, such as contractual pay increase, overtime, pension, office supplies, facilities, professional development, and which, which is the, and also the three-eleven account, which is the other contractual where the, the body cameras, our first payment comes into play within this budget cycle, which is, you know, just the start fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. So some of the decreases is, and some of these are also dependent on the position of the deputy chief, but would reduce, there'd be a reduction of contractual holiday pay decrease, that's one projecting twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars of straight time training due to that position, technical supplies in the two oh two account went down thirty-one hundred dollars, equipment maintenance down seven hundred and twenty dollars, uniform allowance decreased by thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. If you remember back a while ago, you, you approved the extra lease, lease payment for our last one, so we're, we're going to be paid up and clear in, in May, that decreased our automotive equipment account by twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then there's also a decrease in the four oh five technical equipment account for a decrease of seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, which I know I ramble a bunch of numbers off here pretty fast, but we can go back to each one and figure.
So are you proposing that we, I don't remember adding a deputy chief, are you proposing we add one, is that a new?
Correct.
Okay, so in here, I don't know, it has fifty-two weeks at almost nineteen hundred, but an extension of only twenty-three thousand dollars, which...
They're willing to give up a grade A to get that, the formula picks up the fifty-two point two times eighteen ninety-seven and subtracts off seventy-five nine twenty, so the delta is the twenty-three thousand dollars, they get the deputy chief and move a grade A.
So there's no new hires, everybody's just...
Okay.
It's not a new body, it's just a shift.
It's a shift, it's a ramp, and the reason for that.
It's a little hard to understand that, the way this is laid out, okay, glad I asked.
Nothing...
I thought, I, I thought the numbers just...
I was gonna have the same thinking.
It just doesn't add up here.
spreadsheet didn't work.
Yeah.
The staffing, the...
Pretty easy numbers.
It just allows us to have two people outside the union, the chief, the deputy chief. Without hiring from the outside. Moving man, probably, from with that.
So what's the, what's the role of a deputy chief?
Do you want to give your overview?
My overview? So he's, he's a second in command, obviously going to fill the position of the chief in his absence. We have set duties already in our, our rules and regulations, which, if I knew you were going to ask that question, I could have written down the whole list for you, but I can definitely supply them out to you, and those duties might change depending on the next chief's course of action, he can obviously change those. You have a second person outside the union, especially for any labor issues.
I should have brought the chief, written down the list.
So I, I guess why I'm asking is, you know, at the moment, or for quite a while, we haven't had that position.
And that's why I...
So, so we, so we have a chief and we have a lieutenant, so we have the chief's role, the lieutenant's role, how does, what's the difference between that and chief, deputy chief, lieutenant? That's, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, you know, especially with some labor issues and, and disciplining, you really shouldn't have somebody in the, in the same union issuing discipline like that, there should be, it should really be someone outside the union. If you reflect back to July, the way the structure was set up, I could tell you how it, you know, I got a phone call as I walked off a cruise ship to be in a special meeting in about three hours with North Branford Police Commission. Why? Because you need somebody outside the union as a representative of the department. God forbid, something happens to the next chief of police, you have somebody that can already step up without going through all the work that the commission had to do in the meantime to set up and maintain that structure.
Well, it kind of begs the question, then, why do we want a lieutenant position?
The way, the way they, the command structure focused in the past is, they, they split up the responsibilities of the department, so typically, at least from my experience here, is you, you have a command structure on both sides for the communications and the records division or the bureau, and then you have someone setting just of, of the supervision, the command position of patrol. I think it's important to duplicate your command structure, especially if someone's not around or not able to be around in critical incidents, it's, it's always, I think, critical to have that duplication.
For checks and balances, we went back and did a quick study in reference, when the chief, the deputy chief, and the lieutenant were active in this town, there were less issues inside the department. When the deputy chief spot was removed, for financial reasons, it was strange, it was dependent on, the internal components of the department started to die, then we went to other police departments and looked, and with their structure of a chief, a deputy chief, and a lieutenant, with the chain of command in that direction, it's running much smoother, and then are much more structured and organized. It puts a checks and balances system in place for all parties, because the chief and the deputy chief are not going to agree on everything, but they have to agree on one thing, protecting men and citizens, so they make a neutral ground if they don't agree. So with the chief just being the only acting body there, there's no separation from that one opinion. So you definitely have to have the chief, deputy chief, and lieutenant for structure reasons. Would it evolve? You would know more than any of us, because we may have to look, so you know it's very important to have that structure. The chief can always override, not that he couldn't override the deputy chief, but the deputy chief...
Of course the chief can override the deputy chief, that's why he's chief.
Of course, but he will have more of that with the lieutenant.
It just goes with it.
You would have degrees from experience in what you would have done, to have that chain of command, one, two, and three.
We just don't want a, a department that's so overly top-heavy, and, you know, a clear delineation of what the roles, what the roles are and what the responsibilities are.
Pretty much, he, right now, the chief, our chief right now, intern chief, acting chief, he's our chief.
Is doing a fabulous job, let me just put that, point that out.
Probably putting in seventy hours a week.
No, he, he said he did it on thirty-five.
But I'm saying, one, one person can't assume the whole role, can't assume that whole role for that long of a time without some kind of bid, you've got to have a checks and balances system, and those two top structures, once it was removed, and we went back and did a study internally with commissioners, and once that component was removed, is when you can see the... And once that component was removed is when you can see the lack of morale, not even morale, but the lack of training. You couldn't get enough done. There wasn't enough man, wasn't enough bodies.
Training.
You need three people, the chief, deputy chief and lieutenant. And I'm not going to, what their exact roles are, we have an entire binder full of them. Unfortunately, it's my fault we didn't learn. I wasn't prepared for that question, but you would know more than was in that book that you wrote, Happy World.
And you're proposing a contractual employment, yes?
Correct. Same term as we would do with the chief. It would be five years contract. So there'd be nothing where the town could get out of it in a period of time.
Now, you understand that where if you hire a chief, you have statutory protection for that position. There is no such statutory protection for any deputy chief.
It only, protection that the deputy chief would have is a contract for five years. And on another note, getting back to this contract real quick, communications, just to bounce back. I just read it where it says automatic renewal after the date of service ends indicated by this agreement, which is July, June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. This agreement shall continue successive, additional period of one year at either tactical communications or the license may terminate this agreement to the date of service. So this contract that is here, which he has a five percent increase, he has to provide no equipment for free that he agreed to and agreed to re-sign, has a one-year extension, the way I'm reading.
Right, from two thousand and eighteen.
Correct, one year from two thousand and eighteen.
Right.
Yeah, so we're in two thousand and nineteen.
We're in nineteen now.
Right, but it's got two years on there.
It's a, well, that's the thing.
It's a one year with a one-year extension, so he's still good for one more year. It depends on how you read it.
Well, yeah, that's the thing. It's the term.
And that's why it's going to the attorney.
Yeah.
No increase.
Just so you know, it's got no increases on it and it's there for the taking. With the town knowledge, we're free to book.
So, so based on the manpower you have listed here, you're recommending basically that you'd be better off reducing an officer position and putting in as a deputy chief?
Absolutely. You're not going to lose any coverage on the road, so you're still going to, the way that it's projected that if it did come to fruition, you're still going to have, you're still going to maintain your same, your same numbers on the patrol as it is now.
Minus one?
It's hard on the.
That mathematically works.
It does.
See, it does work, yeah. Because nobody's moving from, it's just the internal parts of the department moving titles.
But, so is, so if you're taking a sergeant.
Yeah.
And so you're eliminating a sergeant position and you're going to make a deputy chief. So in some of our eyes that don't really understand this, that's one less person on the road because you're taking a sergeant and you're making that position a deputy chief. So if you have one less person, that's what, I guess, I don't understand it.
I'd need to see that on a flipboard, you know, because if you take one away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mathematically, you're less one.
It's just a restructuring, it has to do with restructuring of roles and responsibilities.
So is one of those sergeants not on the road now?
One sergeant's not on the road now, no.
Okay, and so, so you're taking?
He's in the, there's a sergeant in the investigative bureau that's not on the road, so you.
Just moving bodies. It's basically moving the internal part of the staff in the office perhaps. And creating a checks and balances system so that this one chief that we hire doesn't have the sole responsibility. If he's not around, it's going to fall back on the lieutenant to show up. There's no, they got to split the duties up or this one person can't, like I said, he's seventy hours a week. The new chief is not going to be able to continue that for five years.
Can continue with all the training.
Yeah. And mostly, there's a lot of training involved. Basically, the chief will implement all the rules and regulations. The deputy chief and lieutenant will be instrumental in getting more training from the officers. A lead leaving the chief to do his, a real purpose in administrative, and make sure that everything's running smooth. So you need two people. So in theory, yes, without losing anybody on the, if you want an old-fashioned term to be, everybody that's on the street will be on the street. It's moving the internal components of the department. And the new chief that, apparently when they're coming here, their department just did the same thing because one person cannot keep up with all the duties of the chief and the new rules and regulations that are going on in the state of Connecticut. And like I said.
The real issue is there's only two people in that building.
Yeah, we did a study, and soon as the deputy chief spot was cut for financial reasons here, after the third year, you can see the, the training and, and the way the structure was internally just going down in a rapid form. Because you've got two people with two opinions to bring in front of the commissioners, to voice their opinion for commissioners to make a decision. Otherwise, we're left with just one decision and one person that we're depending on at all times.
So under professional development, because I see that's your huge increase and that's what you had said, that that's what you're concentrating on.
Yeah, the three nineteen account.
The three nineteen, yes.
So that's, that's for a couple of reasons. And one of the biggest increases in that account is the South Central Criminal Justice Association. So that's.
Twelve thousand.
That's just twelve thousand there, but there's a couple of other parts to it.
Is that, is that the first year with the South Central?
This will, this will be our second year back in the program.
So what's the difference between education incentive and tuition reimbursement?
The education incentive is for those officers that have already completed their degrees, which have to be in the criminal justice field. And then depending on what level degree it is, so it could be just an associate's degree where they get a certain contractual amount by the CBA. If they have a four-year degree, then they get a, then they get a different contractual amount by the CBA. So it's for degrees already completed, but they have to be a degree in criminal justice really, per, for the police union contract.
Why?
So then they just, they just get paid because they have that degree?
That's what they set up in the language of the contract.
That's in, that's contractual language?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And the tuition reimbursement is if they're taking courses?
Exactly.
So that is completely dependent on whatever we decide to, or you, you know, we decide to do with it. There's no, that's not contractual.
I believe that's in the, in the contract.
It's in the CBA.
The CBA.
That specific amount or just a amount that has to be given?
That specific amount, which he actually borrowed from last year, which is also why it's a ten thousand dollars more increase in that line item from last year's line item.
Last year.
Since the year's almost over, I think the union might let that one slip. The only other real increase there is under police officer training.
Is that twenty-five thousand?
And I can tell you from the budget this year is, I got about seven hundred dollars left in that account, which still three months ago. And that's without providing any extra training to the four new officers that came through this last year. Two at the academy and.
Which again, part of that three one and three is a hundred and thirty-six and it was actually contractual, so you've got a hundred and thirty-two of it is an increase to what the department needs or what.
More training, less liability, better service.
Have we had claims on failure to train?
Not yet. Well, I should say, not in my tenure so far. There could have been claims in the past. As you know, that, or I'm sure you know, the, the training from the academy when it first started was about six pages long, anything you could think of that was offered from the police officer training council. Since then, it's dramatically declined, specifically the types of training they offer. Most of the training that takes place now is, is at either other departments or universities, such as my alma mater, Sacred Heart University, has really taken the lead in, in leadership programs and also the FBI leader programs that they're hosting up there now. Command staff structure programs through them, also other universities do it, Southern Police Institute, Roger Williams University, Boston University. So it's, the universities seem to be becoming the epicenter of the training these days, but it comes at a higher cost.
The fifteen thousand for the body camera, is that the data backup or is that cameras and data?
That's, that's an all-inclusive, the data storage fee and also the insurance on the equipment. As part of that five-year contractual agreement that the town agreed to.
We got some money from the state for that, right, or?
Yes, which, you only get it for that first year.
It's probably one of the best components that we have at the department.
That's running well?
Very well.
Yeah, well received?
Yeah.
Good.
I mean, we've had a, a couple of internal complaints, or internal affairs investigations. And I can say with a hundred percent honesty, obviously because I wouldn't lie up here anyway, but that solely on the video, we were able to declare officers who were being accused of unlawful use of force, Fourth Amendment violations. Whereas without that video, it turned into a he said, she said of arguments.
Which would have been.
Which would definitely, in any case, lead into litigation. Most times when we show the complaint in the video, they usually retract their statements or false statements at times.
I was going to just ask you, what's the tuition reimbursement for fifteen thousand?
It's the contractual agreement between the unions, so as long as, once again, another criminal justice-related college courses where they have to obtain a certain GPA to get the, so the officer would lay out the money at first and then be reimbursed from the town after the completion.
Once he gets the grade?
Yeah.
And what's the five thousand dollar education incentive?
Those are for the, the officers who already obtained a degree, whether it's an associate or bachelor's, there's no higher level for a master's degree. And I believe, if you're wrong, I think it's four hundred dollars for, in associates, eight hundred dollars by contractual, in a criminal justice-related field that they, they get every July for their, for the contractual agreement.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Just one of the other programs I just like to highlight in there is if you go to the three twenty account, in your second line item from the bottom, this is a project you just got going. And the officer's actually going to start in tomorrow with Shoreline Computer Crimes. It's a, it's a, made up with five municipalities at this time, ranging from, we stretch out to Milford all the way up to Clinton. It's in conjunction with the Secret Service, wherever actually oversees the group. So they do network intrusion protection, they can download hard drives, cell phones. You actually have, if you don't know now, but any of the new cars have actual computers in them, they have the software. What the Secret Service does, they pay for the training, they fly you out to Alabama, depending on what train they're, they're sending you for. It looks like this officer's going to be going for a five-week school, which would equate to about sixty thousand dollars worth of training and equipment that he's going to bring back to the town for a cost of fifteen hundred dollars. So we're really focusing on outreach to, this group's been around for about four years, but our regional partners and making these partnerships. The reason I point that out is to go out and buy that equipment ourselves, and it's really the licenses on the software products that they use is anywhere from three to fifteen thousand dollars a year. So if we have, let's just say, an overdose death, which we just had a short time ago, to unlock an, an Apple iPhone with, if the family or, or nobody knew the passcode, they call it the gray key. It's fifteen thousand dollars per year just to have that license, with no guarantee that's going to unlock that phone to hopefully, you know, help us investigate that death. This group has two, two of those licenses. So it's, it's really, you know, everything our bureau does now is somehow, or even the officers do, is somehow related to some type of commuter crime. Everybody uses their phone, which is a computer. Everything seems to leak back to them, so I think it's definitely a huge win for the town of Branford to be.
Which line is that in?
That is the three twenty.
That's three twenty, that's Charlotte.
That's a contractual agreement between all the municipalities. Also partnered up with the University of New Haven, which is becoming world-renowned for their, for their forensic computer science.
Just so you know, everything that is implemented that we've been doing, that is on this budget, the chief and the lieutenant have implemented all this new technology upgrades, training, all on their own. They have done all their own research, got all those, the money, the help and their, their expertise. They've really advanced the department in the last six to nine months.
So before you were talking about five-year contracts for a chief and then the possible deputy chief, is that, is that the norm and the, like, what, the, the last chief didn't have a contract or?
For one forty-something years?
Yeah.
No.
No contract at all?
There was never anything in place.
If there was a contract after the five-year tender term, pretty much, you were for the chief, you were for the deputy chief. As long as you got a contract recorded to the attorney, the way it's being drafted right now, it's pretty unclassy. It protects the town, it protects what we have been through in the past with other issues in the department. And it also protects having a deputy chief in there, so, you know, from budget constraints, you know, you can cut it anytime. At least when we get a deputy chief's position in there, at least that deputy chief knows this for at least the term of five years. And that.
Because he's not an ad will.
He's not an ad will employee for just one year. Gives us some structure, gives us some dependence, you know, build on. The new chief's role, with that deputy chief in place, it's going to be a big task between, you know, hopefully if the new building goes through, and bringing these men into two thousand and twenty. It's going to be a big.
Yeah, whether it's a deputy chief existing or the, the, more likely the new chief would be a lot involved with us with the building aspects and moving forward and all of that. If that were to go through, where you would need a deputy chief to carry the day-to-day with the lieutenant, it just gives you more, more structure now.
More flexibility there. More avenues to seek, better training and more grand. One person can't do it.
Right, one person can't go out for all these, you know, these guys have done, as you said, a phenomenal job. But there's a lot more out there that we can have resources to if we have the time and have the manpower. Right now, there's one interim chief, one lieutenant that are going in twelve directions an hour. Sometimes the lieutenant's not even in the building, probably out dealing with multitude of other things that are day-to-day operation, so.
So we need one more staff first, especially with the honor of the chief.
What you get is not adding to our position.
Well, I just found it interesting that last year at this time, you were asking for four new officers. And this year, all of a sudden, it seems like that kind of went away. That you're not asking for any new officers to the force, you got one this, this year that we're in. So that's a good thing that you've, are working within that.
Manpower.
If you're suggesting, I could go back to my office.
I know, no, that's, I just.
You want to offer a couple.
No, I just found it interesting that last year, all of a sudden, we needed four and now this year, you know.
The way they restructured it, changed the shifts around, put the new cars on the road, got the manpower organized, the new policies and procedures that are in place, really changed the dynamics of the whole place.
Never in my career have we ever had four people scheduled every day for every shift, which is absolutely remarkable. It's more of a credit to the council, really. By funding that, I mean, that's a service we're now going to give to the.
By adding that one officer?
And the restructure.
And not killing the rest of the rank and file, you know, believe it or not, that helps the rest of these guys on the road with, you know, because you always have guys on the training or.
Right.
Vacation, success, vacations, injuries, you know.
It's the way it's being run right now.
Yeah.
It's, it's running night and day.
It's running the way it should be.
It's running, I don't want to say for real, it's just, it's running very well, it's like a well-oiled machine right now.
You got it.
Okay.
So the only last.
A reduction in overtime or?
No?
I don't, yeah, it's, that's another hard thing to project, especially with the new chief coming in and, depending on sending officers out for training and who goes selected, it's.
One of the strategic plans that based our opinion on the hire.
If he starts new programs or whatever.
He's got a lot of overtime that's going to be put into the training and his strategic plan to train these officers to a different level. So that's left in there, based on the hire and strategic plan tied to what we think he's going to need for his budget.
Okay.
So the one last thing I'll throw out there is just because I know this one's, Al thinks you never get told early enough, but if you do go through with a capital request for our vehicles, I just want to let you know that the company we purchased our vehicles from still has six left. And next year, they change the body style, which is going to change the equipment, which is automatically an increase in cost. Their estimated cost about fifty thousand dollars apiece. I don't know how you would do it, but I'm just giving you the information, but they still have six left on scene. It would average at a minimum savings to the town of over twelve thousand dollars if you purchased them before.
Before July first?
Before July first. I'm not putting pressure on you, but I don't want you coming back saying, you know, how can we save money or why didn't we, you know?
Because equipment, that usually won't be adequate.
And I say, I say minimum very, very comfortably, so.
So instead of fifty thousand, it's thirty-eight thousand?
Well, I'm at a hundred thousand, but for my capital request, but.
Well, you were, in our budget book, that's not what it shows. It shows your request.
I didn't get your budget book, but yeah. But no, minimum purchase for the car is about thirty-three thousand. And that's baseline with no equipment in it, and obviously you're paying for the services and installation and stuff like that. But having the same body style and taking that equipment out and putting it.
That saves, yeah.
That's huge savings.
It is.
If you're going to do it this year, this year's a do it because next year's body style, the cages change, the, the whole structure.
That's what happened with the Crown Vicks for a while?
This will be.
When we got rid of them.
Right, yes, exactly.
You guys saw how every time we got a new vehicle, we would have to get new equipment. Now, we're able to move that equipment, move that equipment, and now again, they'll have a body change next year, which will be another added increase. So if there's six vehicles today.
They froze the production line, so that's, that's all he's getting for this body line. I'm not saying there's not other ones in the state or in the country.
Right.
For our vendor that we use who's on the state bid, that's all he has left.
The capital request for two cars will be necessary with the strategic plan that was put in place by the new hire. Because of his traffic demographics that he wants to do. He wants to increase the license plate readers, he wants to increase traffic control, and really monitor accidents, incidents. And obviously, we had quite a few deaths this year. And he wants to prevent those, like he did with the town every year. For that capital request, you know, we did get another car this year with his strategic plan. Two items that are, were missing out of the key components of our department, the deputy chief and the two cars zone in his physical budget. It's technically based on his strategic plan, critique to what we do. So what you see there is based on the new chief's higher information of the strategic plan.
Okay.
It's also taken us about three years to where we are now, so any way back is, we're going to be starting all over again.
Yeah, somebody got headed with that pen, go half on that fifth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Randy, do you like to punish yourself? Do you like to punish yourself? Why are you here? It's not snowing, so you figure you might as well spend the night here?
Makes me know I'm just lying here.
I don't know. How are you doing?
Well, you can just give them to the town manager, he can give them. We have a meeting on Tuesday night, he can hand them out to the council members, so we need four. Okay, floor is yours.
I'll follow Jimmy's format, and before I start, I just have to tell the town council that since July of last year, I can't tell you the improvement that has taken place between the police and fire department. There's probably very few days a week that goes by that I don't have a conversation regarding some type of operational issue with Acting Chief Lovitz. We're in communication on a regular basis about issues that are happening around town. We've worked towards some improvements that Jimmy was talking about tonight and what I'll talk about in our budget presentation. But I'll tell you that there's such a change in the way we do things from a public safety discipline in the last few months, that it's really great.
It's good to hear.
Okay, so you have a package and there's a lot of basic information that I'm going to kind of skim over in light of the meat of the information that I want to get to and what you already know and the time. So the slide presentation is, the pages are numbered. So page number two basically provides you with an overview of what we do from two different aspects. And as I listen to the police department present their plea to get a number two person in their department, this is how I look at it. So in any public safety department, the structure is based upon a semi-military organization. Doesn't matter if it's career or volunteer, that's the way we work, that's the way we're trained to work, and that's the way recruits are trained to operate within a police and a fire department and an EMS agency. So you have often an individual that's responsible for the administrative aspect of what the department does, and then you have a person that's responsible for the operational side of what the department does. And the toolwork and as a cohesive team to make sure that the goals of that particular department are met on an annual basis. And what drives the department to meet those goals naturally is the budget. So we work within the parameters of the budget to make sure our goals are met. So slide number two basically gives you an overview of the services that we provide. We talk about our mission statement, and again, as I have said in the past, that our volunteers are great in North Ramford. You don't need to hear me say that every single year, but I have to say that every single year because they do a tremendous job. And the mission statement was actually generated as a result of a collaborative effort between our department a few years ago and the graduate program from the University of New Haven Fire Science Department. One of their classes was actually to go out and to work with a fire department and work on a strategic plan. And part of that strategic plan was to develop a mission statement and to look at and make recommendations toward their core values. I see the fire department as probably, with the exception of the Board of Ed, the largest organization in town government here. So slide number four basically gives you the rank structure and how the department operates. Each company is led by a captain and underneath that captain, there are lieutenants, and the lieutenants have specific responsibilities that are established by the station captain. The EMS side, we work in concert with the VINTEC manager for the North Ramford Division as well as our volunteer staff. So there's a direct line of unity of command and span of control, where in the span of control of management personnel, only one person can supervise between three to seven. Once you go past that number, and some even say it's five, once you go past that, you need more officers to supervise subordinates. So again, we update our rank structure every year as a result of officers being voted in by the companies, and they're provided with an indoctrination of what their role and responsibility is. And that goes a long way of talking about what we do for the community. And again, the three priorities in any fire service is life, safety, incident stabilization, and property conservation. We have an obligation to provide the members with an environment that's free from recognized hazards. That is OSHA Rule 5A, general duty clause. And that goes a long way in any fire EMS or law enforcement organization. And the way we operate is very cost-effective. We respond to situations that are, that are under duress and people need our assistance and time is of essence. If we look at our department, and unlike many, many fire departments that are volunteer-based in Connecticut, I have to say that we are always getting people knocking on our door, seeking to become members. Some departments are striving to attain personnel to get to calls. We generally don't have that problem here. So we have about a hundred and thirty-seven active members today, one hundred and twenty-two males, fifteen females. The classifications are you're either an interior or exterior firefighter, an EMS first responder, paramedic, or you may be a fire police officer, which is a separate unit within our department. We also have an explorer program, and the explorers are kids that are high school age and would like to get involved in the fire service. These numbers, the explorers, do not count as part of our overall membership, contrary to what you may hear from the outside. They're not considered members of the department, they're considered a member of the explorer program, which is under the auspices of the Learning for Life Program from the Boy Scouts of America. And we have about fifteen active members in that group, and that organization was reorganized this year and improved drastically. When we operate, we do so based upon consensus standards, and I bring this up because consensus standards and court of law become the area norm. This costs us money. This is what drives the way fire departments operate. This is what drives a fire chief to request money from a town in order to operate. The consensus standard NFPA seventeen twenty is specific to volunteer fire departments. And again, it is pretty in-depth and includes everything from structure to divisions to operations to the type of services it provides. Under this standard, we are a suburban, we're not a rural, we're a suburban community. And again, just as a highlight, in calendar year two thousand and eighteen, our average response time was seven minutes, forty-six seconds. Let me tell you something, that's darn good in a community our size, that's twenty-six square miles. And again, our ISO classification is four, four Y. There's the two pages of what we have to abide by on a regular basis, ISO and OSHA standards. So when we provide services in order to do something, these become our benchmarks. This is what we have to look at in order to do something, buy something, or put in place. So this is what drives our standard operating procedures, this is what drives us to ask for funds to be able to do our job. It could be doing our job better, it could be putting a new program into place, or it could be just maintaining a status quo. There's a new standard that has come out, it's NFPA three thousand, and that is the standard for fire departments to respond to active shooter and hostile events. Pretty significant. You may have read in the paper that the North Haven Fire Department is buying both group vests and tactical helmets for their personnel. That's not in our budget proposal, but I can tell you this, those are sensitive pieces of equipment that have a lifespan of five years until they have to be replaced. So it's something that fire departments are looking at, we're working with other organizations in order to better equip ourselves to be able to respond to those type of events. Other items that cost money on an annual basis is to maintain our apparatus and equipment to certain standards. So every year, every fire pump, pumping engine needs to be tested in accordance with the NFPA standard. Fire hose, aerials, ground ladders need to be tested. Our air cylinders, our SCBA cylinders have to be tested in accordance with DOT regulations. That's every five years. The air pack itself, the two regulators, high and low pressure regulators, have to be tested every single year on those devices. The DOT requires that the cylinder itself, and you think of our inventory, we have sixty-two air packs, times two because there has to be two bottles, two air cylinders per air pack. The DOT has a federal law that says at fifteen years, they have reached the end of the service life, they have to be replaced. So some of our budget requirements and requests have to deal with just that fact. When we look at structural firefighting gear, it's got to be inspected every year, and that too, has a ten-year life expectancy from the date of manufacture. So it could sit on the shelf for a year, you get nine years out of that. So again, as a structural firefighter, you have to be able to issue them compliant gear. Medical exams have to be done every year to firefighters. State law enacted just a few years ago requires every fire apparatus to be inspected in accordance with DOT regulations every single year. And then with regards to competencies and training, we have to follow OSHA standards, Connecticut OEMS standards, and the Yale Center for EMS requirements, as they are our medical control. Page eleven talks about the requirements of the fire marshal's duties. Again, I place an emphasis on the fact that a number of years ago, the town council saw fit to remove a fire inspector's position from the budget. We reorganized the fire marshal's office to include a fire marshal and deputy fire marshal. We reorganized the fire marshal's office to include a fire marshal and deputy fire marshal. So, two part-time staffers achieve only about 40% of what's required of them. Working with our commission, the police commission, and Chief Lovelace, we have been able to get a detective from the police department enrolled in the fire investigators program that is put on for Connecticut fire marshals. So, Detective Deco just started class two and a half weeks ago. It's our focus, when he finishes the program, to put together a fire investigative task force that may include not only North Banford, but the surrounding communities. So, similar to the accident reconstruction team, the computer crime team that Jimmy was talking about, the regional SWAT team, we're going to look at combining resources for fire investigations, and I think it's a very smart move. When you look at what we did in calendar year 2018, again, performance indicators and highlights, you can read on your own, but again, we're able to do this because of the funding that was provided for out of the last fiscal year. One really good piece of information here is that we train department personnel, we have instructors to address the significant trauma area with stop the bleed. We are probably the best-equipped fire department that has stop the bleed equipment. We have purchased a drone. We have trained 13 members of the department. North Banford Police Department and North Haven Police Department has drone operators in accordance with FAA regulations. That is active right now. The next page talks about our training initiatives, and again, the training that we're able to provide our individuals with are based upon allocated funding out of our budget. So, again, that information is provided to you. I'll just highlight that the use of our fire training facility has been outstanding. In calendar year 2018, 491 people participated in training for a total of 1,569 man-hours. There were 10 live burn sessions done throughout the year. The Connecticut Air National Guard has used it multiple times, North Madison Fire, North Haven Fire, East Haven Fire, the Milford SWAT team, and the Yale Center for EMS.
Is that generating any revenue?
For local fire departments that we interact with on a mutual aid basis, we don't charge them, and we don't charge the US military. So, we have not saw any fees from non-mutual aid partners to date. And our maintenance account is $2,500, and that has worked out very well so far. There's little to no maintenance.
No, I'm just asking because that's been a lingering question that people have posed, so I'm just asking.
Regional fire schools, regional fire schools that are partially funded by the state do in fact charge users a significant dollar amount, and that's what drove us to the point of we should put our own facility up. For $1,000 a day, it makes more sense to stay in your own town and train locally. On page 14 gives you a quick highlight of our EMS and fire activity from calendar year 2018, and I'll back up and simply say that fire departments throughout the US, their data is based upon calendar year and not fiscal year. So, again, our alarms are down a little bit from the previous year, and I know East Haven is down similarly, but all the other fire departments around us, their alarms are much higher. So, I know for a fact we have a reduction in our mutual aid response, which most of that being EMS for transport. Next couple of slides, again, is there response by month, is there response by district, by company, is this all background information, transport by month, and then we get into page 19, our budget. So, when the fire commission sat down with myself and we looked at the operating budget for account 4220, the Public Safety Fire Department, when we left the meeting that night, the budget was about 20-point something percent increase. We sat down with the town manager as we annually do, and to date, our budget represents a 7.19% increase. So, the slide there represents the primary categories of personnel, materials and supplies, contractual services, and capital outlet. I know Anthony and yourselves have the supplemental sheets that go with the cover sheet, so it breaks down by individual line items, but I got to mention on page 20 the following. In a five-year history, this is what the fire department has given back to the town. Give back, I say, it could have been because budgets were frozen, or at the end of the fiscal year, it becomes very difficult to determine what POs can actually be closed by June 30th. That is the cutoff date for purchasing. So, in the last five years, we've given back to the town 134,0596. On average, back to the town, 26,913. So, over that period of time, if we're able to spend 134,596, we would be in pretty good shape. We probably wouldn't be up here pleading for some of the money that we are today. So, it makes it pretty difficult. We don't overspend, we're very conscious of what monies we have available, and we don't buy things because we want to buy things. You know, there's things that are must-have, nice-to-have, and need-to-have. So, much of what we look for is what we need to have. Not the last commission's meeting, but the commission before, I was given a list, someone from the commission had asked company captains for a list of what they would like, and I started looking at these lists, and I said, "Oh, my God, this is outrageous of what they're looking for." But it's what they feel they need as a company captain, and some are big-dollar ticket items that we just can't afford. When we look at equipment that's required on apparatus, we follow the NFPA and ISO recommendations, but in a small community, you may need things that are above and beyond what is required to be carried. Fire service equipment by no means is cheap. I'll give you a perfect example. In a defensive fire operation, and I'll put it in layman's terms, you pull up and you have a fully involved barn fire. You're not going to stretch a handline and walk in there and expect to extinguish the fire. You need a large caliber water line that's going to put out a lot of water. So, they're fixed nozzles that may be handheld or fixed on the ground, secured to something. One nozzle of that nature, one nozzle, we have five engines, right? One nozzle costs nearly $3,000. One nozzle, $3,000. If I were to have to buy five of them, that's $15,000. That would definitely put a kink into what we can buy for the rest of the year. But it's equipment that's needed that we don't have. So, when you look at our budget and where some of the increases are, I'll bounce into page 24. And much like the library director, I kind of color-coded things. So, the things that are in red are what we're asking for, and as we look on the EMS side, things that are in black, we actually decreased. So, on the budget side for the fire department, 202, 207, 301, 2, 321, 314, and 405 are all line items that are increased above the present fiscal year. And the biggest happens to be in the 405 account, that I'll explain in a second, and that's technical equipment. Some of these are contractual, some of these are more realistic numbers than we've dealt with in the past. Some are the result of the number of individuals that take funds versus investing their money. Some are contractual obligations, some are related to an agreement between the companies and the town manager for rentals, and utilities are driven by the cost of utilities and the cost for reimbursing the fire companies for their utilities as well. So, as the person responsible for operating the fire department every single day, I basically have two line items to work with in this budget, and that's 202, technical supplies, and that's 405, technical equipment. So, to operate our three fire stations and 17 pieces of apparatus, I got really two line items to use because everything else is accounted for. It makes it really difficult. And in reality, I only have 405 because that's where we get most of the large-ticket items. A lot of the 202 numbers are encumbered for the year on repeated things, and the same thing holds true with other contractual. So, it becomes very difficult to operate the fire department to the extent possible for the dollars that we've historically been provided with over the years. And again, you may say to yourself, the police department, you know, their budget increase is relatively small, and, you know, we're probably 5% above them at 7.19. But I have to reiterate that that's not an increase that we look at as astronomical. This is realistic today, very realistic. So, with respects to the 4220 account, if you have any questions on particular line items between Anthony and myself, we can address them.
I have a question. First of all, I totally agree with you. I think North Banford is very fortunate to have the voluntary fire department that we have, and speaking for someone that lives at Montgomery Village, you get many calls there, and you guys are right up there and give us wonderful service. I do have a question about, there's a large increase in uniforms and clothing, and what exactly is station wear?
So, that's a really good question because it was an item of contention at the commissioners' meeting.
Well, I mean, is this a big increase?
Is this a new line item?
No, it's not. It's not a new line item.
Because that seems to be the bulk of your increase.
Yeah, what's station wear?
So, this was the idea. So, one of the things that keeps members in the fire department is a motivating factor. So, can I say, okay, what's going to motivate people? And actually, this came about when this whole discussion of pension was discussed. So, the item under uniforms was, okay, would the members like a polo shirt and a T-shirt each person of the department? So, there was a lot of yeses, and some of them even said they would like that more than the pension, or stipend, I should say, stipend. So, that's why it's there. Like I said, it was like walking on eggshells as to keep it in there or take it out, but it's a motivating factor to keep people, keep volunteers interested. Hey, we all look the same. The town gave us a T-shirt, or they gave us a polo shirt. Got to understand, fire department, the budget does not provide the members with uniforms. We don't provide them with a uniform. The individual company pays for the uniforms of the member if they meet the requirements of the company as their bylaws. We provide them, the fire department provides them with a blouse badge and a cap badge. So, that money reflects a T-shirt and a polo shirt for members.
So, it's two shirts for each member?
So, yeah, a T-shirt and a polo shirt. Polo shirt being a golf-type shirt with a collar.
Being what?
Like a golf-type shirt.
Yeah.
Three buttons, three buttons and a collar, yes. So, as the commissioner said, it's a morale booster for the individuals.
So, this is going to be like an annual line item?
I didn't say that.
I know you didn't. I'm asking.
It has to survive first.
That was the question.
Pardon? It has to survive first.
Well, I understand that, Al. I'm just asking what the intention is.
Or Joe. I know I have T-shirts and golf shirts that last a couple of years, so, you know, if a new member comes on board, we would give that member what they're due. I'm not saying that they're going to get a T-shirt and a golf shirt every year. Good question, though. We don't have a contract that says that.
That's how those things work.
Could you also be more specific about what is in technical equipment? And I see that you had asked for 65,000, and the town manager reduced it to 50.
So, on 202 or 405? 405. So, my sheet, I don't have the town manager's sheet.
Oh, you don't have our sheet?
No, I don't. So, mine's at 65.
Yeah, ours says 65 on 405.
Yes.
It's the other one that was reduced.
So, that's 202.
202 was reduced.
202.
Sorry, 60 to 50.
Right. So, technical supplies is non-capital items. So, this, I hate to say this, but this town is different than most others. So, if you look at the budget book and look at the back of the budget book, someone decided to put a definition to what technical supplies are, and somebody put a definition to technical equipment. Most other fire departments, they have a one-line item, safety equipment. So, technical equipment under 405 is more of, I won't say capital, but it's the more expensive items that have a longer life expectancy, where technical supplies are somewhat disposable items.
So, they have to replace more often?
They do.
Well, actually, the 405, the technical equipment
Yep.
did get reduced to 50,000 from 65. I thought I was seeing things. Now, as I look on it with me, so, department requested was 65, fire commission was 65, manager approved is 50 for 405.
Okay.
And 202 is also, it went from 60 to 50.
See, now, the technical equipment we kept because we're here and SCBA box, right? We have 14 sets of SCBA boxes.
Well, when you talk about capital in your presentation, is that over and above the budget? Is that outside of the budget or the capital project in your budget?
So, CIP is separate from the...
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah. And that's how this town has it set up.
Yeah. No, I'm good with that.
No, they're not in there. Bottles is kind of what we said. So, in 405, after the discussion with the Board of Fire Commissioners, it kind of works its way into the capital as we move out here, but as I said, things that we use have expiration dates. So, I said before that PPE, technical equipment, has a life expectancy of 10 years. So, we have 67 people that are qualified as interior firefighters. They have to have gear. Now, gear is a helmet, a hood, gloves, turnout coat, turnout pants, and boots, and they all have to be 10, under 10 years of service. So, of the 67 interior firefighters, 44... So, of the sixty-seven interior firefighters, forty-four need gear replaced before 2021. So, right now, as we speak, I'm going to be able to fund, in this year's budget, about seventeen sets of gear for the end of the fiscal year. So, before 2021, I got to make up the difference to equip the remaining individuals with turnout gear. So, you're looking at nineteen-twenty and twenty-twenty-one budget years to make up the rest to replenish PPE for interior firefighters. So hence, under the 405 line item, it was increased just for that purpose.
To pick up a portion of the balance?
Yeah.
I'm assuming is what you're saying.
Correct. Split between the next two years.
So then, my question on like fire hose?
Yep.
Because I remember, I don't know, was it last year, a year or so ago, that was a big issue. Do you actually budget fire hose? You know, a portion of your fire hose every year?
So, of the operating budget, we do not. It's always been out of capital.
Okay.
It's always been out of capital.
Okay.
In a number of years, it has always been eliminated from capital.
The reason why I was asking is, rather than have it hit all at once, is it, you know, basically broken down over the years to reduce the amount of impact it'll have on the town?
Yeah, I mean, so, like a year and a half ago, we had this big discussion about fire hose, right?
Yeah.
And it was very worthwhile, and we replaced fire hose, and this year, we tested it earlier, and in total, we only had six lanes fail. So, those have already been replaced. So, but what we don't have, Tom, is, and this was, this was clearly demonstrated at the tire fire on Spazano's property on Tuckett Road a number of months ago. We used a lot of hoes up in the woods that really, really got dirty from rubber. When the personnel went back to the station, they had to scrub, wash, it had to be dried, and we ran short, because in the fire stations, we don't have an abundance of hose to put on the, on the apparatus. Fire departments, if you have a thousand feet of five-inch hose on the apparatus, in a rack in the firehouse, you have a thousand feet. If you have five hundred feet of three-inch on the truck, you have five hundred feet in reserve. If you have seven hundred and fifty feet of inch and three-quarter on the truck, you have seven hundred and fifty feet of hose reserved. Because most fire departments, at least twice a month, change their hose. We don't have that capability. There's just, we don't have those assets available. So, from a critical mission, if we were to lose hose, we got nothing to put on.
Well, do you have, do you have data that, that you can say that X number, percentage of hose fails annually? Either fails or out of date? Either way, I don't know.
We don't have any hose that's out of date.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, it, you know...
I, I know when hose is going to be out of date, but I can't tell you when a piece of hose will fail. And it can fail for any number of reasons. It's a laundry list.
No, no, but, but what I'm asking is, on historical data, you can predict, you know, using the history, you can use a, have a basic prediction of the future.
It, it would be totally inaccurate, because this town never bought hose for years and years and years. And so we had to basically start over, and that was the problem a couple of years ago. So, we're kind of starting new now, so there'll be in the future a mechanism of tracking and prediction.
So, do you, do you keep that data?
Oh, yeah.
Like if five hundred, five thou, I don't know what the numbers are.
Whatever.
Seven hundred feet, you know, are nonusable, or record that that went out, you know, failed in whatever date, and you keep a record so that you know?
I'm required by NFPA, and I should keep those records.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
So, on page twenty of your handout, when you did the five-year history of givebacks, and it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand roughly, is that, does this number, is this net of any additional requests that you made to the council that were funded, or is this just strictly from budget?
That's strictly from budget.
Okay.
Yes, at the end of the year.
So, because I know, in the fire hose is one that comes to mind, is one that came out of contingency
Correct.
On that, so that's not reflected on here, and I don't know, in the last five years, how many other times, if there were any other requests that came back that would bring this number, net this number down. I mean, I'm just looking at it from both sides.
Yep.
Can we buy like fifty sets of, fifty coats, or fifty sets of turnout gear or something, too?
Fifty sets would be quite expensive. I don't know if we...
It was. Did we buy fifty?
Fifty sets?
I have a good memory.
I mean, I...
Was it fifty?
Don't I, Anthony?
How many, do you remember?
I don't remember. I was trying to find it quick.
It wasn't fifty, but it was a lot.
It was in the forties.
Yeah.
It was in the forties. Definitely wasn't fifty.
But it was, it was a...
All right, you started at fifty.
Yeah. No, it was just different among...
But we bought them.
Right, so I mean, that's...
And that was out of, same thing, out of, out of the budget season.
I mean, so just, in all fairness,
Yep.
I mean, I know you've given back for whatever reason, whether it was, you know, that it was spending freezes, or like you said, purchasing couldn't be done to meet the June thirtieth, but I think this number needs to be an accurate reflection of, there's been requests that have come back to the council that we have funded.
Actually, this, this number is from our operating budget.
Correct.
It's not from extended hose, or gear, or anything like that. It's from this operating budget right here.
Yeah, but what, what's being said is that that number should be reduced.
From what?
From, from what was added.
Well, because in your technical equipment, in the 405 account...
Yeah. We couldn't buy some stuff because we had to give money back.
Right. But then, we funded, we funded technical equipment, turnout gear...
Fire hose.
Fire hose.
That, that wasn't in that.
Well, well...
It was one of our capital...
Turnout gear and, and fire hose, that's capital.
That's what capital is.
It's not technical equipment.
Because that was not in this budget for, for, that's what I'm trying to explain to you.
So why, why, why don't we budget it? So, let's say we needed a hundred, a hundred sets every ten years.
Yeah.
So why don't, why don't we have ten in the budget every year? And then every ten years, everybody's, you know, we got a hundred people with new stuff, and you'd have a continuing rollover thing, and you'd be buying ten every year, instead of having these emergencies of needing to buy fifty, if we could get on a program? And they should be budgeted, then?
It should be, right?
Yeah.
Should be.
That's what we're trying to do with the SCBA, by the causes of every...
Right, because if you, if you know the life expectancy, you can at least...
Right, we know, there's your ten years.
It's ten years.
Even if it's not accurate, it'd be simply close.
So, so whether you choose five, seven, eight, at that level, you replace that gear, now you take that gear in, you hold it in obedience for somebody's gear that gets contaminated, so instead of three years sitting on the shelf, and they're in new gear. Right now, if, if we have a member, and I, I even hate to say this, we're on camera, right? I hate to say this, but we have a member that has gear that gets contaminated, that's got to get sent out to be professionally cleaned, I have nothing to give him, or her, nothing. We have no spare gear. And you've got to remember, this is 2019. Gear has to be specifically measured for every single individual by the manufacturer's rep.
So is that why we can't buy them ahead?
Right.
I just can't take a set of gear and, okay, Rose, this is what you're going to wear. It doesn't work that way.
No, but they could budget.
But you could budget the money and put it aside, Brad.
Because then, who's ever, you just measure the person of who's going out.
Who's next?
Yeah.
Who's in year nine?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Right. No, but your 405 account says here that it's personal protective clothing, boots, helmets, gloves, hose, and other capital-type safety equipment purchases.
And that's, and keep in mind, that's buying for small quantities. Small quantities. A set of protective clothing, a coat and a pant, twenty-four fifty each, two thousand four hundred and fifty a person.
Right. Yeah, but so, my point is, is when we bought hose and coat and pants, it's still, I mean, whether it's in capital or technical equipment, because some of those things are in technical equipment, because that's where you're buying the seventeen or fourteen, however many you're buying this year, you're taking out of your 405 account.
And I have foregone buying stuff that I need as well.
Right. But I'm saying, so, so even, so it's not just capital, those extra requests that have come back to council. Some of it is budget items.
But if you look at history, and you look at our request over the last five to eight years, you will see capital requests for hose specifically.
Yeah, no, I see it in...
You will see that it wasn't funded.
Yeah, I see it in the, you know, capital for this year also, nineteen-twenty.
It's a copy and paste. As I said, when I started off, the, the original budget that we discussed was like a twenty percent increase, and that was kind of unrealistic, but it was what people were recommending, and people wanted, and, you know, so realistically, at seven point one-nine percent, this is a very real budget to keep the fire department operating.
I would just like to make one comment in looking at the capital budget, and the only reason I'm bringing this up is, because I happened to be at the fire commission meeting last week, and I normally don't go, but I was at that meeting, and I was surprised and taken aback at the comment about that, you know, possibly there was going to be funding for two fire department trucks, and I, you know, see it in, in our CIP sheet on the back, and that it's coming out of fund balance is the proposal from the town manager. And I just want to let you guys know, and everyone here, that even though the town manager is proposing this, this is, this was not discussed with the town council at all. And, so if there is any cut to that, two million dollars coming out of fund balance, it's not a reflection that we don't support the fire department. This, this is a total surprise to all of us. We did not know that that was going to be proposed to the council. And a better way would have been to, that the council members would have been told, we have some money in reserve to spend on capital projects, and have a discussion amongst us as to what it was going to be, rather than all going to the fire department. And so, whatever happens with that, I just want to let you know that it in no way is a reflection that we do not support the fire department. There are a lot of needs in town across all departments, and I don't think it was fair that two million dollars all went to fire without talking to any of the council members. So that will be a discussion that we are going to have during our budget.
So, do you want to, if I'm following my format, I'm like on page twenty-one, you're on page twenty-seven, you want to stick on twenty-seven for a second?
Sure.
Because, and I appreciate your brainwash, Rose, because it was, I think it was news to me that night as well.
Oh.
So...
News to us.
So I'm looking at, from a legal standpoint, in justification of what potentially could be done. Myself, as the fire chief, the fire commission, we are legally responsible for the way in which the department operates and the vehicles that we operate with. So, there's some people on the town council that could care less about standards, regulations, and laws. I have to be. That's my forte. I've been through the gamut of ocean investigations. I've been involved in other inquiries and injuries to firefighters. I've testified in local, state, and federal court over fire department-related situations. So, NFPA nineteen oh one, as it says here, is the standard for automotive fire apparatus. And in every, every NFPA standard, there's an annex. An annex is, okay, this is what part one says, but really, this is how we get to part one, from the NFPA committee's standpoint. And I just, as a point of emphasis and clarification, the National Fire Protection Association, the committees are made up of SMEs, subject matter experts, from across the US, career volunteer, and, in this case, equipment manufacturers. And that's how it works. And you'll never change it. So, there's guidelines in Annex D about what do we do with first-line and reserve apparatus? So, on the left-hand side is verbatim the language as it appears in the NFPA standard for apparatus by year. So if you look on the right-hand side, engine one is twenty-four years old, engine two is sixteen, engine three is twenty-nine. And you can go down there, and there's an asterisk after engine eleven because it's twenty-one years plus, because really, the infrastructure of the engine is about a nineteen-seventy-six era that was...
Glider package.
Remounted, so to speak. They call it a glider package by the manufacturer. Tower one is, is thirty years old. So, if something were to happen, somebody's going to throw this up in our face and in a court of law, and they're going to say, do you know what NFPA nineteen oh one says? Do you know that at twenty-five years, that apparatus should have been retired? And of course, I'm going to say, absolutely, I know that. Because I do know that. So hypothetically speaking, if I were to hit Lotto, and, and I'm not a gambler, but whatever that umpteen million dollar award is, and if I were to say, okay, I have eight hundred thousand dollars, and I'm going to buy an engine, and that engine's going to last thirty years, in reality, twenty-seven thousand dollars a year for thirty years is what I'm paying for that truck. If I'm buying an aerial at one point one-two-five million, then thirty-seven-five per year for thirty years is what that apparatus has cost to me. I can tell you this, in the last month, we have spent close to ten thousand dollars on apparatus repairs. Eight thousand just on our aerial alone. It looks pretty. You drive, you drive by every firehouse, the fire engines look nice and shiny and red, but guess what? They're aging. And if we don't do something about it, it's going to be catastrophic. Catastrophic, maybe because of an injury, maybe because of a sudden and unexpected failure, or maybe by the loss of a member or civilian. I can't tolerate that. That's a problem. And I know, there's multiple departments in this town that all need something. What do we, what do we have? We have a lack of strategic planning. And everybody knows that, it's no hidden secret, but there's been the lack of strategic planning. We have a five-year plan. Guess what? This apparatus replacement follows the five-year plan, along with a couple of other items. So, this is not something that we dreamed up overnight. We're following the format that the town is looking to keep in place to make it better. So, this is part of the five-year plan.
And I know that, but my point is, is to take, if we're taking, if the suggestion is we take two million out of fund balance...
I hear you.
All going to the fire department.
I, you don't have to tell me.
That's, that's a tough one for most of us to swallow.
It is.
That it all went there with no discussion.
Yes, that they'd be whipping our backs.
Put yourself in our shoes. I'm looking at this, and you guys sitting right there requested zero dollars for both of those trucks. That's what I'm looking at, right here. Department requested zero. So now you're telling me that nobody told the town manager anything?
So that's not...
And he just came up, taking one point two million?
That's not correct. We filed the necessary paperwork.
So I'm not looking at a correct document, so the North Branford budget that is given to the financial board of the town is not correct.
So we filed paperwork.
I mean, you want to come up and see the zero?
I, I don't want to see it, because I can tell you that we put in a lease purchase program...
Department requests, tower one, zero. Engine three, zero. So, what that tells me is that you guys did your budget and your capital plan... So what that tells me is that you guys did your budget and your capital plan, and you didn't put in for one dollar for either one of those trucks.
So it's right here.
I can only go by what I'm looking at. I mean, that's all I can do. That's all the rest of them can do.
And we did have that in the five-year plan.
You guys all agree, you've got zeros in front of you?
We had it in the five-year plan.
Yeah, and my apologies, again, this is entirely squarely on, on, on me for not communicating when I dropped the budget book off, but, but explaining that we did when we heard from the auditor, that we do have a healthy fund balance, and I think it's a good problem to have, right? So my attempt was just as a starting point, putting in what we could take off the capital list and, and fund. So my proposal, and this, again, is proposed until the council decides what they want to do with it, was to try and get a one-time, large capital purchases one time off-
And you, you, you didn't feel that you should talk to the financial board of the town?
Yeah, sure.
Before you go and wave a carrot in front of these guys' nose?
Well, right, and that was my mistake. It should have been just let as-
Well, that's a pretty big mistake.
Two, as, as zero, and let the-
That's a huge mistake.
And it's, it's, it's not etched in stone, it's just a proposal. So it's my thought process going through to say, we could take, without harming ourselves financially, allocate this up to this amount if the council feels it's a good recommendation or a good proposal to do that as a starting point.
But we don't even know what the state's going to do to us in this budget.
We, we don't, don't yet.
So, so do we have an extra million after this two million's gone? And I mean, I know we're getting off track here. So that's, it's something between the-
It goes back to the, the thing we've said in other meetings, is we've got to, you know, we've got to be careful, we've got to be accountable for the numbers we put out, meaning, meaning the department heads, town manager, and so forth. Because I know when I looked at this, I said, hmm, the department doesn't need this, but the town manager thinks they do. So it, it raises a red flag, you know, and I, I knew something had to be wrong there. But these are important things. This is, this is, this is, accuracy is important. It's, it's, and this is just another aspect of it. And we're up here, we're just trying to make sure everybody's doing, you know, the, you know, that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. We're hoping the experts have all the information, you know, including the department heads, the town manager, the people that are being paid to do this.
Let me just jump on that also, because at the start of your remarks on this, in this area, you, you said that there were people on the council who didn't care about standards. I don't know if you care to tell me how many people on the council don't care about standards. I've not met them. But there are people here who ask questions to try and understand and, and get clarity on things where you're, you're saying, this is a standard, and we're not aware of the standards, and things do need to be made clear. And we certainly know that fire equipment gets resold. Somebody's buying it. So questions are being asked, and, you know, I personally don't appreciate being part of a, a body here that's accused of not, not caring about standards.
So, so when I look at my job, my job is part-time, whether you know it or not, but I probably put in forty to fifty hours a week to manage a large workforce and to keep it safe. And I, I think this body right here, and the others sitting in the back, as well as the other individual on the board that's not here tonight, have been diligent in their duties. I have this document in front of me, and this document was the recommendation to use the lease purchase program for apparatus as we have employed in the past. So fiscal year twenty, the request was four hundred thousand. The replace tower one, lease payment one of five was two hundred and fifty thousand. Replace engine three, lease payment one of five, one hundred and forty thousand. And it would carry it for those five years. That's what we were looking at. So we're hit with a cement block tonight, too. This is the way we've always done business, and this is the way we expect business to be done. Now, I know other towns, especially one that joins us, has taken this same principle, and that is to use their fund balance to buy fire apparatus.
And that was done through a town meeting, though?
So a town meeting, correct.
That the town voted on.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, north, north Haven.
So again, that's, that's how they operate.
Right.
And again, the way we have historically operated was in smaller apparatus, purchase, in larger apparatus, big dollar ticket items, lease purchase over multi-year. And that's how we set it up.
Right, and you, the fire equipment reserve under department request was four hundred thousand dollars.
For fiscal year twenty?
Yes, nineteen twenty.
For the lease payment purchase number, the first lease purchase payment?
Well, it just has four hundred thousand dollars in our-
So it's blank?
Well, no, it has-
Just it's four hundred.
The, the department request is four hundred thousand, so that would-
Can I just tell you what it was for, like for the tower one and?
No, it just says fire equipment reserve, four hundred thousand dollars.
I mean, in ours, it asks for engine three and tower one.
Specifically spelled it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you took the first lease payment and the second one, that's the four hundred thousand dollars.
Correct, correct.
In, in the, which is in the, which is in our budget request.
Yep.
We, we saw until the other night, we didn't know nothing about the fund balance.
We don't have fund balance either. So I mean, they didn't, they didn't dangle the carrot, we didn't know about the carrot.
I, I don't think, you know, I mean, I'll be the first one to tell you, if you have the cash, you're much better off paying for something than you are borrowing money. So I think everybody living in North Branford agrees with that.
Right.
You know? So I, so I don't know that it's a-
It's not a bad thing.
A bad concept.
But really, we did spell it out. I mean, we've been asking, you said you had zero on all of those.
Well, we had-
We do, but don't think-
Four hundred for the local question.
I was messing with you. I have zeros right here.
That's what I'm saying.
We, we all knew sitting up here that you guys didn't have zero in there. But I, I do want you to, so clarify, for, for me at least, and probably Tommy, these standards. So, so are they, so when they do that, they're, they're nationwide, and they're looking at trucks that might roll every day.
You're right.
In some of the cities and stuff.
Right.
And, and our trucks are very well-maintained, because you guys stay on top of that.
Yep.
So what is wrong? Like what's, so I guess in reading this, it says like if it was, it wasn't maybe apparatus not built to NFPA standard over twenty-five years old.
Correct.
So, but how would you build a tower truck diff, like what is, what's wrong with our tower truck by today's NFPA standard? Because I'm sure it was built to the standard when it was built.
Correct.
But what are they doing different today? If you've got a new truck, what's different?
Besides the safety mechanisms that are built into the cab and writing compartment, and that is airbags, rollover protection, the aerial, on the aerial itself, and, and believe me, this is a pain in the butt for us. Because there's so much, and, and you know yourself from construction equipment, there's so many systems that are electronically based. And on fire apparatus, for example, for stabilization, right? You know how the outriggers work, right? Just like on construction apparatus. So if you can't get the apparatus, the outrigger apparatus completely extended out and situated, you may have to bypass a safety system in order to make it work, or it may not work at all. So the same thing holds true with the aerial. If it's not properly angled, locked, if the hydraulic systems aren't in line, if the electrical systems that work, the mechanism for the motor for the hydraulic system isn't right, it, the system shuts down, won't work. I can tell you this, I have a picture on my phone, you know, everybody knows where I came from, New Haven, right? Thirty years. I have a picture of the Sutfin one-hundred-foot aerial tower, fully extended up at the training facility. This is within the last four months. And I have an aerial, a ladder, not a bucket, so I have the bucket up here with people in the bucket, locked, it won't move, hundred feet up. And I have an aerial being brought down, positioned next to it to get the guys out of the bucket, because they were stuck there. Because of some of the issues with the electronics that are built into some of these apparatus now, the same thing holds true for pumps. There's so much of the electronic components that make, make us crazy. But it's driven by the manufacturers.
So here's the thing, though, and then, and I'm seeing it in construction equipment, the new stuff is much worse than the old stuff.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, but they can't make anything like they used to. They're prohibited.
And so I'm sitting here, and I'm thinking, you got thirty years out of that aerial truck, you get a new one, in five years, it's going to be a maintenance nightmare. I'm just going by what we're buying new.
Yeah, the idea is to buy the right one that you're not going to have maintenance problems with.
Was old.
And keep your fingers crossed. Yeah, I, you know, I agree with you.
Because all of those systems, they're all electronic, and there's a little bitty switch somewhere that until the mechanic has found it and fixed it-
You're right, I agree.
You're paying them to search for it.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree with you more.
So-
Right, and the regulations, correct me if I'm wrong, are written with the idea is, you, use it or not, X number of years, it's, it's out of date.
You know, you're absolutely right, Tom.
Right, I mean, that's-
I said this to some people the other night-
Because we have the same thing in our industry, so I, I know.
Right, right. And I said this to some people the other night, the town council's going to be, they're, they're going to think I'm out of my mind when I go to them and say, hey, listen, we got to start replacing tires. Because if you remember, if you were sitting in the town council a number of years ago, I came to the town council, and a person that used to be seated there basically said, oh, we can't afford it this year, how about next year? Listen, DOT says I can't use tires older than seven years on fire trucks. Got to replace them. We're going to be coming up on seven years soon. So whether or not they got a lot of tread life left in them, got to replace them, because that's DOT.
So what would we do with, what would we do with the used truck?
What would we do with what?
What would we do with the-
The old tower.
The old tower one.
So my personal opinion?
Yeah.
But that would come from the board, is we sell or trade it in? Trade it in.
Because the, the things here say you, you can put some stuff in, like as a backup.
Yes. So I'll, I'll give you the North Haven version. They just bought a new aerial, over a million dollars. And they, they got that because they said their other aerial was no good. Their other aerial is in one of their volunteer stations and is being used.
Well, that's what I'm asking, are we better off keeping it, knowing that it's a second line?
So, so you bring up a valid point, but remember this, if you keep it, you're still going to maintain it, and it's got to be tested every year. So there's still an investment that you got.
But the new ones have to be tested.
Yes, they do. Yep.
There's a cost associated to have it on the book.
There is.
And to keep it current.
Exactly.
And then the other place is storing it, is housing it?
Yeah, exactly.
Because we only have room for one tower truck, right? Or do any of the other facilities?
Two stations can hold a tower.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and the same thing, I mean, we haven't even talked about, but there's a replacement for an engine in here, right? So what you've got to understand is this, so the engine that we're looking to replace, again, is, is old, right? But if we have an engine that's out of service because of a maintenance issue, or it's got to go out for repairs, even, even basic PM, when that engine comes out of that station, we have nothing else to put there. It's not like the police department where cars out of service, go and get car sixteen, it's in the backyard, it's not being used. So when we have a truck out of service, there's nothing to replace it with. That firehouse doesn't have an engine.
So when you trade it in, what do they do with it?
I couldn't tell you.
I'm just curious, I mean, do they dismantle it? Rebuild it?
Honestly?
Goes to northern New England.
They, they could send it to northern New England, they could send it to a foreign country where there's no standards.
Yeah, okay.
Do you, do you get money on a trade?
Whoever gets them is happy to get them.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
Do you get, is there any money on a trade? Like if you traded in it?
Yeah.
What would it be worth?
I can't tell you what the value would be, but yes, there's a value in the trade.
So if the one point two to purchase new, that's just flat out no trade?
No trade, correct. You're right.
Okay.
You're right.
And we could-
So that puts a little light bulb on it, maybe we should look at what the value is, and if we get trade in, what's the, now what do we decrease our costs by?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean-
I, yeah. As opposed to keeping it on a roll and having the responsibility to maintain it?
Yeah, we have to weigh both of them.
Yeah.
We have to know.
Yeah.
Can you have somebody come in and evaluate those and tell you how much they're worth?
Usually an equipment manufacturer will. Yep.
But, but I would suggest, if you're going to keep something, that you would keep the engine, not the ladder, the ladder truck, because like you were saying, if an engine goes down, we don't have one to replace it in a firehouse. It adds easier to store than-
Than tow.
Cheaper, cheaper to maintain.
Cheaper to maintain. So if you're thinking about-
I mean, in retrospect, I think Midway bought East Davin's aerial years ago.
They did.
And I think they got it for like seven thousand dollars or something. They couldn't get rid of it.
And then they jumped it.
And they jumped it. I mean, and their aerial worked up until the day they got a new one. And, yeah, I don't know.
So there's not a lot of value, is what you're saying?
Right, they tried to sell it on the road. They tried to sell it on the road, and I think they started out at like twenty-five thousand dollars, and I think they wanted to get like six thousand dollars for it from, from Midway just for scrap metal. And it worked. It's just that nobody wanted to take a shot, you know, with a twenty-five-year-old truck.
Is, so is engine eleven, that's the, is that the seventy-six Han?
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, that's the glider package.
Right, it had the big power in it, so that's why we went with a glider kick. You guys didn't want to give up that big, and then how about the muffler system on it? It sounds good going on.
We, we had a Han, Han like that in New Haven that we got in Derby, and that, that truck purred like a kitten.
I got a memory mark.
Purred like a kitten.
Actually, we put it to the test when our barns burned.
That is true.
In seventy-seven. We had a foot of ice on one thirty-nine. That thing could pump some water.
Okay, so in, it's ten o'clock, and I know we started late, but just, I'd like to wrap it up in the next ten minutes.
Sure. So, want to jump to twenty-one? The ambulance? So the ambulance budget, as program requested, there was no change from the town manager, represents a one point seven six percent increase. There's some additional supporting information there. And again, as I, as I mentioned every year, we deal with the, the elder population in our town, and we deal with those that are on Medicaid, Medicare. Some people have other types of insurance, so there's some data there from our ambulance billing service about payer mix. And payer mix is so, so important today. So if a town wants to get into transport business, the first thing I tell the fire chief, find out what your payer mix is. That's going to make or break you. So on the ambulance side, again, there's some budgetary changes, but the, the bottom line is, if you look at historically, what the transfer out of the general fund is, it is, it has remained kind of status quo. And the average is about a hundred and sixty, we, we requested a hundred and seventy-five, so the average is about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars over the last five years transferred to the general fund. So basically, what you're saying to yourself is, gee, we provide a paramedic transport service twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, in the town of North Branford, operated and staffed for a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars a year. Because that's what you pay. It's offset by what is collected. That's not too bad. I don't think you'll find anything is cheap.
Are we still in the red in the ambulance?
What's the last of them, for last calendar year, Ian? Uh, what's the last of them, for last calendar year in?
Yeah, so, even with the two hundred thousand, for this year, I think it's like sixty thousand in the red.
Yeah, have we ever been out of the red? No.
No.
Right, from the...
Anthony, why wouldn't we fund, why don't we, why wouldn't we fund enough to get out of the red? Because where are we taking, where are you taking it, the money from, to balance it?
General fund transferred from the forty-two twenty-five department over to the two-twenty fund, and like the chief mentioned, we try to keep the transfer reasonable. This year, it's up to two hundred, which is a little bit higher than it was last year, but it's a hundred percent, sorry, you can go through sixty, bring it to zero. Again, it's a matter of the budgetary, you can jump year to year.
Yeah, I mean, we've never, I mean, it's always been in the red, it doesn't, I mean, because...
Ever since you went paramedic, it's been in the red.
Yeah.
But that numbers come down what we've funded.
It fluctuates, yeah. Some years, it depends on, as you mentioned, the payer mix and expenses and whatnot.
So, page twenty-five basically has two color notation by the, by the line items. Just under three twenty, other contractual, just kinda bring out a point here with regards to what you guys were talking about with Jimmy. So, the fire department, police department, the ambulance, we all have contribution towards the total communications contract for maintenance. So, each of us pay a slice.
Well, in the police department budget, it had...
In communications.
In communications, right, it had police, fire, public works. So, they were all separate line items.
Yeah.
So, it's not in your budget, it's over in communications? Is that...
Correct, and there wasn't five percent built in on each of those.
So, those weren't current contract prices? It was the five percent increase based on this contract here? Okay.
Anthony, if we, if we bond these capital things, is that a twenty-year bond, or...
You can bond whatever you wanna bond. Typically, due to twenty years, that was a discussion of the committee that was identified half dozen items at the bottom of page, the bond, the larger ticket fire apparatus, things like that. So, the discussion was basically, if we have, if we have the cash, why would we buy a bond? The chief mentioned before.
I totally agree.
So, whether you pay that cap...
When we get into the budget, can you show us what the, I know you can show us, what, what the one point two million is, if we, what's it cost us if we bonded it to twenty years?
And get, formally, the capital page, the page that you have in your book is at submission. The two trucks and I identify an expenditure of four hundred thousand.
The capital page?
Yeah, the capital reserve, four hundred thousand. So, if you have a list, correct.
The one that doesn't say zero.
Well, no, that...
For those two apparatus, just four hundred thousand, they requested instead.
The four hundred thousand was the way they were doing it?
Yeah, exactly.
Is the equipment reserve, right?
So, they requested it under the equipment reserve.
Right.
And they, they requested it under lease.
Got it.
Correct.
And we didn't, it wasn't zeroed out totally, but you need to keep some pot of money going in there, so you do have a capacity.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Definitely.
Well, my guess is it was reduced because...
Do we have anything in there? For fire?
Yeah, well, my guess is it went from four hundred to a hundred, because they purchased, they were purchasing vehicles, so we wouldn't have the lease payments for it.
Right, just to keep a little bit.
And you have to keep something in there for other things that came up.
Not gonna do much with four thousand dollars.
You can't even buy the small items on the capital page.
So, if you're on capital, on page twenty-six, again, one of the other items is to construct an additional assignment cash transmitter, and that would be for fire, police, and public works radio deficiencies. The other items, we kinda touched on already, replacing SCBA cylinders.
Is that, first one you said, is that for like dead spots?
Yeah, exactly.
Dead spots around town?
Yeah, so we, all three of the public safety organizations have some significant deficiencies as you come up Route eighty from East Haven. And as Jimmy said, right now, our satellite receiver at MBIS is out of service, so that means this whole area could be deficient. So, this is probably the third, or maybe even the fourth year that we've put in for
So, we don't have redundancy anywhere?
What?
You know, overlap, I guess, on, you know, rate, because you're saying that's for, for the radios, right, to be able to communicate, so you have the dead zones, so...
So, you need to understand the technical aspect of our communication system.
Yep.
So, it's not just one transmitter, there's three, and even though there's three, there's overlap zones, but because of where they are, we still have an area over here that's not covered by these other transmitters.
Oh, okay, okay.
But if they, if they go down, Tom, we have a backup transmitter, single transmitter at Ogenkowski's on Parsons Show Road for police and fire. So, our coverage is very limited if that happens. And a tertiary backup is a transmitter at police station with an antenna on the roof that would be even more limited.
There is one area in capital, but you can turn out gear number I have in there, it doesn't tie to the department, but I'll check that tomorrow.
So, well, that's just a point of information on page twenty-eight. I know I have mentioned this on numerous occasions at town council meetings, but with the government shutdown, the assistance to fire act grant program had been put to a halt. So, I have made, since the government reopened, I've made at least three telephone calls to our contact up in Boston, they have no further details. But if we were to be awarded the grant, the grant allows for the replacing of all our mobile radios and portable radios, which by the federal government standard, at seven years, they're outdated. And they're long outdated. So, that, that grant would be four hundred and thirty-seven, seven seventy from the feds and our five percent match with total four fifty-nine, six fifty-eight. Keep in mind that the radios that we have now were also purchased under fire act grant back in about two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. Under the grant program, if radios are more than seven years old, you're supposed to get rid of them and buy new. Just turn to the last page for a minute. So, if you follow the fire service at all or news, there's a tremendous amount of firefighters that are being diagnosed with cancer today, all related to the exposure of toxic chemicals, and they're wearing a protective clothing, or hoods, over the years, that may have not been cleaned well enough, or may have not been cleaned at all, or just the repeated use and the lack of good hygiene after a fire. So, what fire departments throughout the US are doing are these campaigns to reduce contamination. It could be special wipes that you clean yourself with after a fire, but more importantly, fire departments are buying their members a second set of turnout gear, or a second hood, or both. So, that when they come back from a fire, they put clean gear on or a clean hood on. So, that, that's the trend. So, you know the trend here, we can barely provide one set for our members, but the risk of cancer for firefighters today is so, so real.
Okay.
That's a pretty big page.
Thank you very much for listening to us and staying late.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And you all do an awesome job.
Well, we couldn't do it without you guys.
You probably couldn't do it without me.
He said you probably could do it without me.
We have to ask, we have to ask...